About the clock on the wall, as per usual, I'm about a half minute late. But I will open this meeting. And I call it to order as of now. And the first agenda item is the pledge allegiance and then a opening prayer. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Pastor Henry Blicken has offered to say the prayer for us today.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we glorify you for sustaining your love. We especially thank and praise you for the gift of your son, Jesus Christ, in whom we have redemption and forgiveness of sins. We give you thanks for your hand of protection over care centers, hospitals, churches, and schools in around our community, and for your continuance in sheltering us from both man and natural calamities and harm. Guard and protect all law enforcement, fire, emergency, healthcare personnel, as they strive to keep your people healthy and safe, as you protect others in their line of duty. Father in heaven, look favorably on all public servants, teachers, county workers, and all who serve at your will, so our citizens, nonprofits, and businesses may prosper, and your name be blessed through the works that they do. We commend to you, Father, those gathered here this morning, especially Commissioners Don and Ron, Randy and Richard and Ron, along with the leaders, directors, and administrators, who together support and strengthen our county as they continually carry out the duty for the well-being of your people. Graciously receive our prayers, deliver and preserve us, for to you alone we give all glory, honor, and worship, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to welcome everybody who's taken the time to be with us today, whether that be here in person or online. And with that being said, I would ask if there are any public comment on items not on our agenda today? Does anybody out there have anything of that nature they'd like to speak on? Seeing none, we need to determine any additions or corrections to our agenda at this point. Do staff or anybody up here, have you seen anything you need to feel need to be added or changed? Seeing no comments, I would say we'd move on to our consent agenda. And I would open the floor for discussion on items on the consent agenda at this point. If anybody has anything after studying the paperwork that was sent us.
What's the difference between a computer and a forensic computer?
Difference between a computer and a forensic computer?
Yeah.
I think it's really just the use and probably the size. Oh, Keaton is here?
Yeah.
Keaton, can you answer that?
Enlighten us.
The question is, is because I've never heard of it before, I guess. What does it do?
Morning Commissioners, Keaton Burger, Reno County Sheriff's Office. So right now, what we do, we have a celebrate program. It is what downloads all of our digital forensics for the county involving crimes that we investigate. Right now, we're running off of just a normal desktop computer. So it's one that you could purchase for your home that will run any software that you have. What we're running into is the size of phones now. We're having to transfer sometimes 290 gigabytes of data from a phone to the computer. So it's a long process on just a standard home computer. Digital Intelligence, the company that has this Fred that they make reference to, the forensic computer, it's just a scalable system that allows us, sorry, allows us to process that data at a faster rate. So the storage sizes are bigger, the RAM inside the computer allows for faster processing. So it's not anything outside of just a tower that's built specifically to process high amounts of data that we're encountering in these phones now.
And cost?
I'm sorry?
The cost?
So the two that we have that are on the agenda there, they come in at 10,200, I think, apiece. And we're looking to get two of those.
And that's in your budget?
No, Commissioner, I'm sorry. That was, I applied for a grant through the Attorney General's Office. And we received the grant from them for the $25,000 to cover the, both the hardware, the new monitors that would come with it, and then some side storage stuff so that we can continue to process and store this evidence forever.
That's all paid for with the grant?
Correct, yeah. Everything is coming out of the grant.
So we're not using, good point, we're not using taxpayer funds. We are, but they're not being... It's coming from a different agency. We're not imposing those taxes.
Correct.
Well, thank you for your explanation.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Any other questions on items here before we, our discussion, before we entertain a motion to go forward?
I have motion to pass the consent agenda has...
Well, just leave it off. Considered motion to pass the consent agenda as stated here.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any further discussion before we take a vote? Seeing none, Abigail, help us out here.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda, under business items, is item 7A, the Appraiser's Annual Report. I am told that he's not able to attend today. But I'm sure administration there might be able to fill us in on any questions we might have to ask. And he gives a pretty lengthy report on paper that we've all read. Randy, do you have anything to add there?
The county appraiser, as you said, Michael Plink's unable to be here this morning and can come back at a future time if you want more questions or answers to any questions that you may have. But he does have in report kind of an overview of everything they've done, you know, past year. But a reminder, the county appraiser is under the, their work is under the supervision of Department of Revenue, the Property and Valuation Division of the Kansas Department of Revenue. And they score, they have great scores from Department of Revenue, or PVD, I believe it is in here, that they, for 2025, their compliance, they are completely in compliance, and I believe they scored a total of 100%, 100%. So I mean, there's no, there's no concerns from, at least from my office, of that the county appraiser is doing exactly what the state of Kansas assigns them to do. But if you want me to have Michael come back at a future time, or if you have questions, I can send them to him, and we can get any answers.
Anybody have any comments or thoughts on this? My personal thought is, is he is audited annually. We know what the audit said, as Randy pointed out. His division is on target with his budget. There's no budget concerns there. So as far as I'm concerned, we've got his written, written report. In my mind, we got what we need. If you guys think we need him back at a future point, or want to ask him questions, make that point known now so that it can be arranged. Mr. Chairman, my thoughts are, he gave us a really good detailed information here. I would just encourage the citizens out there to look at the agenda, look at the items on the website. And I think that will help answer a lot of questions that we heard last week. And so, you know, it's up, it's out there. Sometimes we get hollered at, if you will, with regards to what's, we haven't presented things. It is out there. Please go look on the website, read the information here that the county appraiser did. Then if you have any questions, you can contact him. So with that, unless somebody else has got further comment, I should ask that first. With that, I'd say we're ready to move on to our next agenda item, which would be this MOU with Growth Incorporated. And I think, Randy, you're going to handle that on their behalf because they're not available?
Yes. Last week, we were requested or notified by the Chamber of Commerce, Growth, Inc., about whether the county would be willing to become a sub-recipient for some grant money that the chamber has that needs to be spent by the end of this year, possibly by the end of March, if they can get an extension, for engineering and design work for three miles worth of road that its primary purpose right now will be to serve the new Evergy plant. So it'll be off of Highway 50 on McNew Road, two miles down to Mills Avenue, and Mills Avenue West to K96. That three miles needs to be engineered, designed, so we could go out to bid later, or in 2026, for making those three miles of road. Right now, they're township roads. I believe four different townships oversee them, different portions of them. So it makes sense for the county to be involved. Don Breton has good working relationships with the townships, understands roads very well, township roads, county roads, and then state roads, state specs. So when the chamber asks if we could step in and help be the sub-recipient of this grant, Patrick, Don, and Breton and myself thought this was a great opportunity. We could get the job done, and we're going to try to get it in the timeframe they need. But to start the process, we can't start until this MOU is approved. If it's approved by the commission and signed, then we can move forward. Talking with Evergy about what they need for a road, what the chamber needs for the industrial park for the road, get with engineers. Don is ready to send out an RFQ for design services today or tomorrow, as soon as we know what your direction is. And we will be fast-tracking this work to get the three miles worth of road converted from township to a county road, but at state specs for the amount of load it's going to take just for the construction of the Evergy plant.
And then their use as time goes on?
They, right, we would, with this, we would want to work with Evergy to get into a development agreement and some maintenance, understanding of the road, because it then becomes a county road. It adds three, or at least two miles. The McNew part would add two miles of county road to what Public Works, Road and Bridge, takes care of now. So that extra cost, we would want some, it would be in a development agreement with Evergy to have some assistance for that additional cost that the county will see in future years.
From my understanding of what I read and what you've just said, we are not talking about spending county money.
Right. It's a reimbursement grant. We may have to upfront, pay a bill, send the invoice in to the state, or through the chamber to the state, get the money reimbursed. But the net cost to the county should be zero.
Well, just like Randy said, today, we're asking for this MOU to do, for the design work to be paid for from this grant. Then that's the first step. Then Public Works will very quickly put out an RFQ to get a designer working on this because it's so fast. And then Randy and I will be talking to Evergy as soon as possible once this goes to make the plan for how to, how they will pay for the road. But it's not anticipated that the county will be involved in paying for it, but we are going to be the one who ends up building it.
Somebody's got to take the lead, even if it isn't our money.
Yeah. I mean, when they proposed their site, it's in an unincorporated portion of the county. So I think Evergy's evaluated how they want to proceed, and then they contacted us last week and asked us to work with them on it. So we want to get this done for them. It's important for the future of the county, we think.
Yes, I'd agree. And since it isn't encumbering any county funds and leaning on the taxpayers to come up with the money, I would be in favor of getting this passed and getting the show on the road. Any of you guys have any comments or suggestions or questions before we move forward? Randy?
I don't know that I have any comments or questions, but I think we, you know, in the sake of time, that's why they're doing this. They want to get rolling with this project. And I see that we can be a benefit to them, obviously, to get it done. I know it throws an extra load on the Public Works Department for sure. I appreciate them being agreeing to do this. I think it is of benefit to the county, and so it needs to get rolling and get done. It'll be some years before we see real benefits from it. But I think that the power is needed, and so it needs to go in. And, you know, my concern, I just hope always that we can continue to have a good relationship between the three entities that have been involved in this, and that there's not, it's not a thing we're trying to take away from anybody, but it's something that just has to be stepped up and done so we can get this thing rolling. So I appreciate everybody that's did the hard work on getting to this point. So, but I'm certainly in favor of going forward with this.
Any other?
Yeah, I attended South Hudson City Council Meeting Monday night, and they unanimously passed all the necessary rezoning and approval for the project. So...
If there aren't any further comments, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we accept the motion to approve the MOU with Growth, Inc.
We have a motion? You want a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Before we vote, any further comment that might have came to mind or questions? Seeing none, Abigail, we'll need your help.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes. Motion passes. That includes, concludes our business section. We've got a study session afterwards. We're not getting off lucky.
We're on course for a record, aren't we?
Well, maybe. Let's quit talking and keep moving. County Administrator Reports is next on our agenda.
Okay. In the packet are the monthly reports for Aging, Public Transit, The Clerk, Communications, District Attorney, Information Technology, Public Works, Solid Waste, the Treasurer, and Youth Services. Anything in their monthly reports that you guys have questions on?
I didn't see anything personally when I read through that. Everybody's kind of on budget, and at this time of year, that's getting to be kind of a major deal. They did highlight what they are doing and what their crews are out there working on at this present time, and how our common money is being spent. So for me, I think their reports were substantially, were substantial reports and gave us what we need to know. Anybody else have any comment or thoughts? Want to ask any questions on anything you saw?
My next report in the packet is a financial report, and just shows that revenues, overall, for all funds, revenues are about 98% of the budget of expected. So they're on par to get, to receive more than what we budgeted for, which is good. Expenditures, overall, were about 57% of the budget has been spent. General fund balance is in good shape right now. Kind of can see first the revenues that we're at 99%. That's just on the general fund, but overall, it's 98% when you add all the other funds. When you go to the cash balance for the general fund, we start at 17, we're at 20 million right now. So we're, aren't going to collect as much revenue the next few months. It's mainly sales tax each month and a little bit of motor vehicle tax. But the majority of our revenue comes based on the early part of the year when property taxes are paid. And then all the other funds are in here. Aging is down a little bit. But you can see that we haven't transferred the money from the general fund, hasn't been, or money hasn't been transferred over from another fund for that. Same with, and Public Health's in good shape. Ending fund balance is up 220,000 higher than their expenditures. Noxious weed is in good shapes. Special Bridge, again, Road and Bridge is also in good shape. We still have transfers year in that will take place, use up some of the cash for the Road and Bridge Fund to go into a reserve for future equipment and road work. Solid Waste is up. Youth Services, I will note that the 600,000 is from the general fund. Has not been transferred. I think last week internally, we were talking about moving 300,000 of that over. So once those transfers will be done by the end of the year to bring that cash balance up. So it looks like it's in poor shape right now. That's because we have not moved general fund money that's earmarked for that, for youth services, over yet. And then Solid Waste, post-closure. Employee benefits is in good shape. This is, this transfer will also get closer to that four and a half. That's the health insurance. We, with our bill, we will move most of that remaining budget authority right on the transfer to the self-insurance fund to cover costs. So that fund balance will go down before the end of the year to get a little closer to the beginning fund balance. Tech, mental health, I will mention, I mean, they have not received their full allocation yet. But as you can see, the ending fund balance in those, there's not enough money right now. So we have to continue to collect some of those motor vehicle and other taxes coming in. If we don't collect enough, they will not get their 100% allocation. So if the taxes don't come in, we can only give them the amount of cash we have. Those are the two funds I'm kind of, we're watching right now to make, hope that the money comes in so we can finish the obligation that we, allocation that the commission gave to them for 2025. Special Parks Fund, that's the one that we, you guys passed a policy last meeting. So next year, we probably will start spending some of this money for smaller communities. Yes, Commissioner Parks?
So on allocations for tech and mental health, they don't draw on that throughout the year? They just take a lump balance at the end?
No. We give, based on distributions, I think it's...
I just wanted you to clarify that.
Yeah, they get money at the beginning. It's kind of like quarterly. They get, every so often, they'll get a payment. But we don't do that final payment until we know we have the cash. So throughout the year.
I just wanted to see, hear that stated. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes. And then bond and interest, low-ending fund balance. Any questions on the financials? Historical museum, that's another one, kind of like the mental health. That's one, we don't have the fund balance right now to finish the full allocation, but hopefully, we will by the end of 2025. And it's like that every year. We get low to where we have to wait for the money to come in for that final payment. Any questions?
You guys, if you don't have any, I don't. There's no action to be taken.
That's all I have for my reports.
It's basically a report. If there aren't any further questions, we probably need to go on. Left is our county commission reports and comments. Left is our County Commission Reports and Comments. I've been starting down here, let's start with Richard.
Well, I had a few phone calls when we were working on the budget, and about, you know, what s- some of the departments were asking for, and what we had agreed upon giving them, and, again, nobody, we have twenty departments, and then sub-departments and stuff, and, um, I understand their concerns, but I also know, you know, we, we're a county that is responsible for spending the money for the whole county. I mean, if you have something that you use as a service, I understand not wanting it to be cut, or not get the, the increase that they want, but I also understand that it's those decisions that we have to make. That being said, I also know we're creatures of habit, especially as I age, I find out I, I do some of the same stuff, uh, over and over again, and, uh, my wife and I, um, have been with the same insurance company for our, our homeowners' insurance and car insurance for over thirty years, and all it's done in thirty years has just gone up, without any, any claims on our part, you know, or anything like that. And so I decided finally that I'd had enough, and so we went and shopped around, and we cut our homeowners' insurance some, in almost half, for the same coverage, same deductibles, things like that, so. That being said, if you are, have a policy, or if you're, you know, you're thinking about, you know, taxes and, and how you're spending your money in your budget, you might want to be, if you're at home, maybe it's time to get some policies out and look them over, and maybe change some stuff around, um, um, not do the same thing, or just say, well, they, I've had them for years, that's just the way it's been. Don't necessarily accept that as, as what you need to do, maybe, and I feel sorry for some of the older people, and I'm up there getting close, but some of the actual people that need services, because I really think there are people that try to take advantage of them, and luckily, there's enough younger people that are helping their parents out, or their older, uh, friends out, so that they don't get taken advantage, but it's very easy when you're, again, stuck in the mold of doing what you do, that you just, they don't even check their accounts, bank accounts, they just know the money comes out. So, that being said, I don't take anything that we've ever done up here lightly, for sure, and I know people would like to get, you know, if I have a increase that I would like, I know people would like to get that, but with the economy the way it is still, we're trying to do the best we can here, and get the services that everybody needs, but there are some things that we can do on our own to maybe make our budgets at home a little bit better, and that's what I'm going to pass on. Also with Ron, what he said earlier, you can actually go to the website, the Reno County website, and everything that we've discussed, or every number that we've looked at, you can see, so, we're not trying to hide anything, uh, and we want you to know that the services that we have, we're trying to get paid and taken care of. Can't mean to get on my soapbox.
You're, you're fine, that's what this segment's about. Ron?
I don't want to take anybody else's thunder, they can, they can also comment with regard to this, but there's a couple of groups out here that are need to thank you for good effort and to save us money, save the taxpayer's money. And it was in one of the reports that you can read, uh, that maintenance came in, their employees saved seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars on a project versus having a bid out. They got a bid on it, a repair, and a pro- a, a machine, and, um, decided that they could do it themselves, and called, "Thank you for letting your employees show how good they are." I'll break that down a little further, that was a six-thousand, and I don't know how much labor was involved with, with the actual maintenance people, but from the contract, it saved a little over six-thousand dollars in labor by doing it.
We got to get you a remote control.
And I don't know whether anybody heard that or not, but Kyle, thank you, and employees at Maintenance Department, thank you for saving seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars on a prom- project that they did themselves versus hiring it out to somebody. The other big thank you goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission members, because of their time and work that they dedicate to all the proposed property situations, as well as the regulations, and they do that, they don't get paid for it, but they spend quite a bit of time on it, so I think that's something that needs to be recognized also, along with Planning and Zoning and the Director of Planning and Zoning, plus Public Works Director, Don. I had occasion about a month or so ago to drive the roads in the county, because I hit it a lot of, of the rural communities one day, and, uh, fantastic. You know, there's still one or two roads to be done, but they'll be done by the end of the year, but overall, what an improvement's been done on these county roads. And, uh, Monday at one o'clock, I'll be meeting with K-96's Board regarding the suggestions and thoughts for the local consult, KDOT's local consult, and it, the R area will be in Pratt coming up here later on. There's another item, these other items, I will say one thing, it's in the report assessor's report, that the legislator, in their wisdom, has cut seventy million dollars of appraised value, and fourteen million dollars of assessed valuation, off of some personal property that I consider a lot of those personal property items, luxury items. Now, that's going to have to be somewhere along the line made up, in some form or another. I think we will have a visit with them regarding that coming up in a, uh, session with our state legislatures. That's all I have.
Mr. Parks?
Richard, I feel like that should have been said in fifteen minutes or less about the, about the insurance. Sorry. Um, I've had some questions about tags when you go in, uh, tag department's doing great, not that, but if you'd noticed, registration fees have went up. I've got an older car than the other two that I had, and I really kind of brought it to my attention, because it's a hybrid, it's more than my new truck, in the registration part of it, state did that, and Ron, you're exactly right, they'll find a place to put it if they're not going to charge it, they transferred fees, because they just did that this last year, they don't burn as much fuel, and so you're going to pay more registration fees to pay for the highway. So I had a conversation about that, and I said, "Well, you truly make a cut, you make a cut, you don't put it somewhere else, you need to stop that," and so, anyway, probably make all of them mad that know me, but I don't care. Also, I was remiss in not saying anything about the, the City of Hutch when we talked about, uh, MOU, and, and they did put a lot of former work into this, in the very beginning of this, and so I appreciate the work that they put into the Evergy, uh, plant, and, and it certainly purely was an Evergy move to, to make this happen, and I, I meant to say that back then, I just sat here and thought about that, I thought I should have said that, because they did have a lot of time and effort put into it, and so, and it takes everybody to make this happen, so you, it's obvious, you can see that, so, I appreciate that. I don't, Randy, did we, I was going to mention this, did you mention something to, uh, the Sheriff's Department about that, I was going to bring up the idea of the building? Was they open to that? Probably a later discussion, but maybe the rest of the board don't know. Okay. I told Randy last, I think it was last week or a week before, and I was talking to him, I thought a good use of that building over there would be for their new inspections. They've done quite a bit of business now already, and, and making some decent return on inspecting vehicles, that'd be a, a fantastic place, there's parking to the north of it, for them to take that and use that building, so it didn't just sit in there in that lot that we purchased to, to do their inspections. I don't know if they'd be open to it, whether it'd work out, but I just thought that might be a great use of that, instead of it just sitting there, and, and certainly would be easier for patrons to get in and out to do something there as well.
People, just for people who don't know, um, when out-of-state vehicles come into the state, they have to get inspected, and our sheriff's office does a lot of, does those for people, so.
Well, they didn't used to, it was always just Highway Patrol, but they got the ability to do that now, and so that's good.
They're, they're doing a lot of them, and they do a good job.
Yeah, so, I think that's a great thing. Anyway, other than that, I don't have anything else to talk about.
Mr. Vincent, you have anything? Well, that leaves me. I've got a concern. It's been an ongoing concern, and, uh, last week, in a newspaper article, we were, uh, chastised a bit, and, in this man's opinion, which is just that opinion, uh, we are not transparent enough, and his article comes at the same time, a commissioner from a neighboring county had received the same complaints over there, and he was checking around as to what we and other neighboring counties do in the way of transparency in our, in our meetings and, and everything we do, and his comment was complete different opinion. We were some, a county to be emulated, and, and, uh, possibly their county could benefit by doing similar things that we are doing. So you got a certain set of circumstances that don't change in two different opinions, and everybody's open to their own opinion, and how they end up coming to that opinion. But, as he pointed out, and Ron alluded to earlier, he got on our website, we give the times of our meetings, a complete agenda, you can even go to a, agenda packet, which gives you every single document that we have to work with, and it's really that we see to form our opinions and our votes. And I'm at, might add as a sidebar, Reno County's Planning and Zoning Commission does the same thing. He made the point, he can get on, he can watch our meeting online, if he can't watch it in real time, it goes to the archives, he can bring up any one of those meetings, anytime he wants, twenty-four, seven, and see what was done. There's also, in that website, as is pointed out, where you can get the packet, if you want to speak on an item, there's three ways to get on the agenda and could have spoke today, if it's that important to you. And, uh, this thing with him's been going on for quite a while, and everybody just kind of ignores the fact for what it is, it's an opinion. But when his opinion brings him to a point where he accuses, and makes a statement that we, as a board, our people, our administrative people, and some of our employees are not doing their job in the manner he thinks it should be done in, in his opinion, he labels us as stupid. That's why after two-and-a-half years of listening and biting my tongue, I am saying something today. They do not deserve that. Call me what you want, but don't treat our employees that way. His fix for not taking advantage and calling us non-transparent, when it's clear that we are very transparent, his fix, I mean, you can lead a horse to water, you can't make it drink. He's got the data, he's got everything available, fully transparent, if he doesn't use it, it's his problem, and not our problem. His fix was that we aren't using our personnel the way we should, and we should have press releases. In my opinion, we need our press releases, and they need to be used as press releases should be used, to inform the public. Don uses them all the time when he's going to have a road closed, if it's going to end in inconvenience, or, or, or even maintenance that, that may cause delays. The public needs to know that that's going to happen, so they can adjust their schedules. Disease outbreaks, whether they're here in the county or in neighboring county, the people may need to know in a press release what's going on, and what precautions they should take. In the case of the storms, that type of thing, uh, it gives people a, what's available to them. Now, the agencies that get this are independent businesses, newspapers, radio stations. They are determining, when they look at this open meeting, and all this data, that they can walk up and get twenty-four, seven, anywhere in the world, it's available to them, completely open. They are making a business decision, there is only so much column space, only so much airtime. If it's a worthy news item, that's where it ought to be. If we start putting items that those businesses are making a decision on, for their clientele and their business, and we make it, a press release, you start impeding their management abilities, because in the form of broadcast media, you get a license. Part of your licensing is that you will communicate certain press releases for the benefit of the people in the community you operate in, and that's part of getting your license. So now, if we're going to, as he suggests, use press releases to reiterate data that's already available, and they've used to make a decision in their business, private businesses, we are putting them in a situation where, do we have to? Just everyday items, he was harping on buying a piece of property. Do we, every time we buy a truck, piece of equipment, do we need to have a press release? Or do we need to have, it, it's in our minutes, it's, it's common knowledge, it's, it's, it's in our open, open meetings, in our, our, our complete way we do business. That's their decision, not ours to force upon them. So, I have great confidence in the voters of Reno County. I think, when they know the full story, they can have their own opinion on what they think of me, what they think of him, and they can make their own decision on who, if anybody, deserves to be called stupid, and our actions called stupid. I think he stepped over the line this time. I didn't bite my tongue today. Thank you for putting up with me and my thoughts. And with that, if there isn't anything further, sorry about that, we might have missed out on our, on our record. But with that, if I see no further business, hear no further comments, I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Don't anybody leave, we do have a study session coming up.